So first up is roll call.
Archana Alliar.
Here.
Kyle Meederman.
Lisa Ramon.
Here.
John Hasden. Eric Corrigan.
Here. Now join me in a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So do we have a motion to review and accept the agenda for the session?
So moved.
Second, I second.
Archana Alliar.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Eric Corrigan.
Yes. Then next is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I so move.
I'll second.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Archana Alliar.
Yes.
Eric Corrigan.
Yes. Now we have the action items. Superintendent, recommendation for principal of Thunderbolt Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We did have a interview process with our committee members, and then we also had second interviews. And we are delighted this evening to recommend Mrs. Rebecca Neal, who joined LHSUSD as a fifth grade teacher at Ora Grande Classical Academy. Mrs. Neal has previously served as principal and vice principal for Heights Christian School for 13 years. In her final year serving at Heights Christian, Mrs. Neal was the junior high principal, where she fell in love with the teens and tweens and all the exciting and complex challenges that come in working with that age group. During Mrs. Neal's tenure, she served in a variety of roles, including teacher, mentor, instructional coach, commissioner of the Junior High Athletic League, and finally administration. Mrs. Neal has a zeal for tackling big projects. This was identified early in her career when she was appointed by the Heights Christian Superintendent and Governing Board to support a struggling elementary school and improve systems and processes, as well as support new district initiatives. Mrs. Neal is passionate about not only building systems, but also building relationships with students, staff, families, and community groups. She later found that her calling in education was working with the junior high students. After supporting the elementary school, Mrs. Neal spent the next nine years at the junior high before moving to Lake Havasu. Mrs. Neal led the junior high in adopting a one-to-one technology model for teaching and learning, complete with digital citizenship coursework, appropriate staff, student, and family training, and revised discipline policies accordingly. In addition to this, she supported the school in the development of a school improvement plan focused on positive behavioral interventions and supports, 21st century learning skills, and using student data to drive instructional decisions. Mrs. Neal's passion and commitment to educating the whole child, as well as her attention to detail and building systems, will be a great fit at Thunderbolt Middle School and keep many of the positive changes headed in the right direction, allowing the staff and students to continue to grow. It is with great enthusiasm that we recommend Mrs. Neal as the principal of Thunderbolt Middle School, where we know she will cultivate and support a positive learning environment for all.
Any comments?
Well, I just want to say, I know we have not voted yet, but thank you to Mrs. Neal for being willing to step in mid-year like this. You're really helping us by doing that, and I'm very impressed by what I read about you and your experience. And it's especially great that you have prior experience being a principal at a middle school. So again, thank you for being willing to step into this role.
I was a part of the committee, and what stood out was her experience. And I'm very much looking forward to you bringing your experience and the things you do to our middle school students. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve item 4.1.
I second.
Archana Alliar.
Yes.
Lisa Ramon.
Yes.
Eric Corrigan.
Yes, congratulations.
And I did let everyone know they were welcome to leave after this. Thank you.
You brought your own fan club and everything.
It's great to have a fan club.
Yes.
It really is. So the next item is Action Item 4.2, Business Services: Annual Financial Report for 2021-22.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The annual financial report for fiscal year '21 and '22. Could you read the action item for me? Because I don't have the presentation.
The report was prepared in compliance with ARS 15-904. After approval by the Governing Board, the annual financial report will be submitted electronically to the Arizona Department of Education, and a link to the summary will be available on the school district website.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Dr. Stone, this is the annual financial report and presentation of the annual financial report as stated for fiscal year '22. The PowerPoint presentation is very much the same template that I've used in the past. All that changes, if we go to that very first slide, is the information that's contained there, and especially the numbers. So the first page of the AFR points to revenues and expenditures in summary form for some of the major funds. I always highlight that there are sections noted that property tax collection is demonstrated and displayed within the report, as well as revenues that are captured from the state and county level that are there in the center of that page, highlighted with the red box, so that you as a board and taxpayers or any who view can clearly see that revenues are received via property tax collection, as well as through the state. And then again, the summary, as you move from top to bottom, just a natural progression, shows revenues and then overall expenditures, again, just for some of the major funds. This is a state report in form, so this is not district-generated. All that's generated are the actual financials from our general ledger and then populated into the state form. On page two, this page is very similar to the one that you see before you each year, twice a year actually, well, three times a year, I should say. So during the proposed budget, and then the adopted budget, and then again at the revised budget, you'll see this as page two on those forms, as well as page two here in the annual financial report. This just highlights the maintenance and operations expenditures, the general fund, one of the major funds that we have available to us for expenditures in the district. And the main takeaway of this page is it does break down, column by column, the salaries, the benefits, purchased services, supplies, et cetera. But the main takeaway is down at the very bottom, you see on the PowerPoint slide, in the totals column, in the middle there, it says "actual." So we need to make sure that the actual expenditures do not exceed budget capacity. So you can see in this case it does. If you go to the next PowerPoint slide, you can see a little bit of a summary. And again, I've used this in years past because I think it creates a little bit more of context to what page two has to offer. So instead of it just being numbers on a page, there are some examples. This is not a complete listing by any means, but it gives us an example as to the dollar amounts that are contained in each of those columns. So for example, $6,100 salaries. You'll recall in previous year, fiscal year '22, or in preparation for fiscal year '22, the board approved $1,000 increase to those certified staff who work less than 225 days, $1,200 for those who work more than 225 days, and then a $0.40 classified per hour increase. COLA, in just the salary portion alone, was just under $1 million in cost of living adjustment, $703,000 in stipends. Again, these are purchases or expenditures just out of MNO, not any other fund. $6,200, that's where we have our medical benefits that come out, our state retirement contributions, workers' comp, all the payroll taxes that come out of an employee's check. I put a little asterisk next to the $1.9 million in medical, because if you look down at the bottom of the PowerPoint, there's a note there that there's approximately $3 million that we credited back towards medical expenses this year due to the closure of the LHS EBT. So you'll recall that when that closed, we had roughly $4 million in the account. And in order to capture those monies, we would transfer the monies from the old NAEBT account, reduce our expenditures in our medical expenditures, which then allows us to capture that budget capacity in cash. So we really had medical expenditures, just in MNO, of almost $5 million, just in MNO. A lot of the other funds do also contribute toward medical expenses. But because of that journal entering and crediting back to capture that money from the NAEBT, our financials are stated as a $1.9 million expense and benefits. Purchased services, you can see our substitutes contracted through ESI. Other examples, printing and disposal services, $6,600 is supplies, classroom supplies, custodial supplies, gas and electric, and diesel and gasoline fuel costs. If you go to the next page, and stop me at any time if you have questions, or you can ask them all at once at the end. The next page on the PowerPoint, next slide, shows the report for classroom site funds. So you can see that we captured funds 12 months out of the year, but we only paid out for the first 11 months in fiscal year '22, because you can see the distribution date for the June 30th payment was June 27th. We pay out classroom site funds by June 30th. So the timing of that, and this happens every year that I've been aware of, that were always delayed, sometimes multiple months delayed in distributing those classroom site funds. But you can see in the green on the PowerPoint that that payment is not just ignored, but we do pay that out in the next fiscal year. So we do carry that forward and pay that out to those eligible classroom site fund teachers and staff in the next fiscal year. On the next PowerPoint slide, you can see it references the classroom site fund page in the annual financial report. And on the PowerPoint, I compared the change between the last fiscal year '21 compared to fiscal year '22. So in fiscal year, before fiscal year '22, classroom site funds were distributed between funds '11, '12, and '13. Last fiscal year, in '22, they simplified that, and they reduced, or they actually funneled all classroom site funds to a newly formed Fund X. So it does help from an accounting perspective. We don't have to break up the dollar amounts. It used to be 40% would go to one fund, 40% would go to the other, and 20% would go to another fund. Now it's just 100% in Fund X, and we distribute that according to the statute. And we also distribute that according to the classroom site fund requirements and plans of the district as well. On the PowerPoint, you can see that the total classroom site funds were roughly $5 million, approximately 260 certified staff members, teachers who qualified for that. Subtracting insurance and benefits, the gross compensation for those who received classroom site funds last year was $13,233.36. On the next slide, we look at just our capital expenditures in Fund 610. So capital expenditures are broken out, as shown in the AFR. But on the PowerPoint slide, again, much like the page two of the AFR, I gave some examples as to some of those expenses. So we're talking about software licensing, instructional materials, curriculum, synergy, our classroom, our student system, student information system program, absence management, which is frontline, that is for staff to have their evaluations processed through this platform, as well as time and attendance for hourly staff punching in and out and recording absences through absence management. Intouch was purchased as well. It's that parent notification system. This is a result of also our ESER plan in being able to send electronic communications to parents more timely via text and other means. FMX facility scheduling software is also included in this. And then computers and peripherals are also included through the purchasing of, using of fiscal year '22 funds. On the next slide and in your AFR, there's a federal and state project summary page. It highlights federal projects and state projects. So federal projects, you can see that section contains like Title I funding, some special education funding, E-Rate funds. Our ESER funds are also recorded in that top section. And then the state projects down below in the bottom half are more state-driven projects, like gifted education, college credit exams is what we also have funding for that, results-based funding. So very few site projects compared to the federal projects that do come from the federal level through the state and then to the local districts. And that summary is basically just showing where we started at the beginning of the year, the revenues that we received, the expenditures that occurred, and then the ultimate, the ending fund balance, which would roll into the next fiscal year. The next slide on the PowerPoint is again another summary page of other funds. Like I said before, MNO, and there are other major funds that are provided to the district, but there are also other funds that we receive through local contributions, as well as it could also come from the state, but most of this is local-driven. So instructional improvement, for example, O2O, that does come through the state. However, we also account for gifts and donations, for example, something that you see each month through the board agenda. That's driven through local contributions. So you have a combination of both types of funds listed here and broken out in this summary page. So you can see again, beginning fund balances, revenues and expenditures for fiscal year '22. On the next slide, you can see also noted in the annual financial report, this is the area in which we show bond and short-term debt. So in the top portion of that page, you can see the outstanding bond that we have, subtracting the principal that we retired over fiscal year '22, and then outstanding bond debt as of fiscal year '22. I wanted to highlight over, so again, that second box on the left that just demonstrates we have no short-term debt. So we have nothing that we owe to banks. We are debt-free. On the right side of that page, I wanted to point out that you'll see a discrepancy via calculation as far as, I guarantee you that we didn't reduce salaries, but the interesting part of this, that this was state statute, number of years back, that we post average teacher salaries, and then how those salaries either increased or shrank from one year to the next. Last year, fiscal year '21, we used the amount given us by the Auditor General's office, which they publish an annual report for all districts. Now, the Auditor General's number contains stipends and other supplemental pays. So that greatly inflated that number from fiscal year '21. The number that I put on here is true average teacher salary as of just a number of days ago. So that's also tricky, because again, and these are conversations we have locally and at the state level, that there's really no, there's really no effective way to truly measure that. Because with the number of staff that come and go, they retire, new hires come in, they get hired in obviously at a smaller salary because the retirees have been here for, typically been here for a while. So they're leaving the district, which then just really creates a little bit of just inconsistency in how to really truly calculate average teacher salary. We have teachers that leave mid-year. We have teachers that are hired mid-year. So what I've done in that scenario is I take those out. If they weren't here for a full year, I'm not including them in that calculation because that would really, that would really make it look inaccurate. So for this year, you see that little upside-down of reducing compensation. Again, I guarantee you, we didn't do that, as stated on the first, I think the second, third PowerPoint slide. You approved the $1,000 increase to certified, or $1,200 for those who work more than 225 days, and the $0.40 an hour increase for hourly staff. But just for optics and presentation there, and I also did include that in the summary, that it's base salary only, does not include stipends or classroom site fund monies for your staff. On the next slide, again, just another summary page. You can see by just the many, many funds that are available to the district, some large, some small. This is a summary page of the funds that we've already previously reviewed. Again, in simple form, just beginning fund balance, demonstrating revenues for the fiscal year, actual expenditures for the fiscal year, and then what is projected to carry forward into the next fiscal year. So the, one of the, second to last PowerPoint slide that we have here, it's not in the AFR, but this was by request, and I think that this is definitely an appropriate time to just reflect this and show it, as we've just reviewed all the other financials. This is a breakdown more into detail because of federal funding, and there are a lot who are in the community who really just want to know, where are we in use of these funds? So this is a very, very high-level summary of the ESER funds as from, as we started in SR1 all the way through to SR3. You can see the SR1 in the PowerPoint. We obtained $952,000 roughly. That expired in September of '22, so that just expired a few days ago, where we are no longer able to use that fund anymore. That has been around for a couple of years now, and that has just recently sunsetted. You can see, though, that we used those funds for summer school staff, increasing nursing availability, because our nurses were split at sometimes between two site locations, and then with COVID and responding to, I believe the true intent of why these federal funds were distributed in the first place was to help in the response to COVID. And so all of our expenditures here and our plans from SR1 to current SR3, I believe that in working with administration, I think all of us have tried to very much be true to the intent of these funds and not try to supplement other programs as a result of new funding. And that's, I believe, is pretty evident in the descriptions that are provided here in summary form on this PowerPoint. Summer school nurse, or summer school staff, we are addressing learning loss. We're addressing just that gap of learning that happened during COVID, especially with shutdowns of schools. Nurses, as I mentioned, moving from having nurses cover multiple locations to putting a nurse at every location and staffing for that so that we could address the needs of students and staff during this particular time. The Intouch electronic notification system, again, parent communication was key, getting messages out to people in a quick amount of time, write to their mobile device or other electronic device, trying to just help get information out as quickly and timely as possible. PLP school licensing to address our learning, online learning platform, and trying to help students and families who took the avenue of online learning, especially during the times of COVID. Cleaning supplies and PPE were also budgeted for and expensed. And then custodian equipment, we crossed the entire district. We completely changed over and brought in new custodian equipment. Most of our equipment was decades old, and there was just a need to truly address that. Again, responding to the intent of COVID and creating clean environments and responding to the health and well-being of people. We believe that was just a true reflection of how to use those funds in a manner in which they were intended. SR2, again, just basically a continuation. So if they were in SR1, for the most part, they continue on through all the way to SR2 and 3. So a continuation of what was started in SR1. We brought on a computer technician, some purchasing of curriculum. We purchased some drinking fountain water bottle filler stations as well to try to not only update our drinking fountains throughout the schools, but also to provide those more touchless options as well for students in being able to fill water bottles. Mobile devices and laptops, surveillance cameras we are purchasing have not been installed yet, but we purchased three electronic marquees across the district for those school sites that have yet to upgrade their marquee to an electronic marquee versus the old letter, slide it in and change the message manually. So that, again, being true to ESER and communicating as quickly and timely as possible, transitioning with the intent of those ESER funds to address those parent and staff communication needs and community communication needs. Going into SR3, you can see the awarded amount of just under $9 million. And what I did here is I basically did a screenshot of what is on our website. So Dr. Stone and I actually spoke this morning regarding SR3 and putting information here. And I believe that this is probably, I mean, thanks to her suggestion as well, that just putting a snapshot of what actually is there and available to the public. So this is something that is posted on our website. If you look down at the bottom of that section, I did a quick screenshot as well of where you would point and click on our website to access that draft form that's up on top. So again, this summarizes the intent of using those SR3 monies. There are times where we have to revise because there are circumstances that come up and that our plans do sometimes pivot. But I really believe that, again, as I've said many times, that we're trying to be true to funding given us based on the health issues that we were faced with over the last couple of years. And then finally, on the last slide, this again is a standing slide. So you can find all of this information on our district website. Again, another snapshot of what our district website looks like and where to point and where to click, and where to find the actual annual financial report, and where you could even reference this PowerPoint. We anticipate all of this being, all of this needs to be uploaded to the state by October 15th, but October 15th is a Saturday. So October 14th, we will have this uploaded to the state. And shortly thereafter, once we send them a link, you can also view this information through the state. So not only on our own personal website, but you can point and click through the Arizona Department of Ed's website and actually reference any state or any district within the state, including ours. So you can access this information from multiple ways.
Discussion.
No, but thank you for, as always, for the transparency. And I do appreciate, first of all, the ESER breakdown was very helpful, and then also showing how to access the information on the website. Because that is something people will ask questions about the budget, and I'll say, well, it's, all that information is available on the website, which is true. But if you don't know which links to press, then you might have trouble navigating. So I appreciate you spelling it out. Thank you.
I too want to thank you for the transparency in those sites. Just as a note for anybody who might be watching this over video, even if you're not that technologically inclined, people here will help you to find this information. We're very much wanting to make sure you get any questions answered that you have, so please do that. I just had a couple of general questions, and these aren't really on anything that are specific to fixing or doing this one. But looking at going forward from this budget to the next, have you seen any trends that you think are worth pointing out?
So two things. One is always staffing. So not being able to project or predict what's going to- So, not being able to project or predict what's going to happen, who's actually going to show up, or who's going to have a life event requiring them to leave early, that's always something that's not just a budget area of concern, because it's just so, it's so hard to, you're you're always planning for maximum budget capacity, but then you don't always achieve that because of of what happens when we're when we're not able to hire people, then we have unfilled positions, which then means there's still budget capacity left to spend. Thus, it generates carryforward, which is not necessarily a bad thing, and that's a good thing, but but being able to fill positions is the most important thing. So, we have, that's always an issue, always whatever comes out of the state, that's a big unknown from one year to the next. So, we'll just wait till this legislative session starts. I know the last I've heard, the aggregate spending limit is still up there and a topic for discussion. It just seems like every year lately, that's been something that it's just been kind of, we're all, we're all just kind of pivoting to the state to figure out what are what are they going to do? If if they don't act, then there's some serious budget cuts that would have to happen. Hopefully, that would be in the short term until they actually fix it. And if that's the case, I would, I think the district is sound enough financially to withstand that for that fiscal year, but going into the next year, if that expenditure limit's not renewed, and that's just going to be our new reality, then we have, not just us, but every district in the state is going to have some serious, serious budget talks at that point. I don't necessarily know how how the state could survive, public education could survive if that were the case, because there's other districts that are far greater than we are that that wouldn't be able to endure that. The other issue on the horizon, not issue, but the other event that's on the horizon that will be coming before you later this month at the regular scheduled board meeting will be the bond Series C issuance. So, that's something to look out for. We'll have representatives here from Phoenix, representing Stiefel and the law firm, Gus Rosenfeld, that handles all of the paperwork and legalities of that process. So, they will be before you in October on the 18th to bring about the, looking for the acceptance of issuing Series C bonds. And that was, if that is passed, then we are looking to try to issue those bonds sometime in November or December to go out and sell those bonds. They're already voter-approved. They're part of the 2016 approval, but we took that dollar amount and distributed it, cut it into three, three parts. This is Series C, the third and final series of that bond issuance.
The last question I had was kind of based on the SR grants. With SR3, do we see, do we think there's going to be an SR4 on the horizon, or is that going to be it with SR?
I think November will tell a lot. So, we'll have to wait till the elections in November and see where the conversations go from there. I don't anticipate that happening, but.
Yeah. And my question kind of goes along with that is, and being in a good place financially probably answers a lot of this question, with the full-time positions that we are funding with the SR grant, when that goes away, we are still intently, I mean, we never know what's going to happen in the future, but we're in a position where we're going to continue those, or will that be evaluated at that time?
So, that that'll be evaluated, but I'll, we've had those conversations, I think, with everyone who's been hired under the SR, under SR monies, as they know from from the very first before, at the application stage and the interview process, and then certainly at the hire process, that that these, they will be paid out of a grant that has an expiration date.
But it's hopefully because of, you know, having counselors and stuff at schools is a good thing, right? So, hopefully, we could continue it if the bottom doesn't drop out. Okay. Those were my questions. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve item 4.2.
I second.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Or Gina Aliar?
Yes.
Eric Curran?
Yes. Next up is an announcement. The next regular governing board meeting will be October 18th, 2022, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. And last up is, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Arcana Aliar?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Curran?
Yes, we are adjourned.